Hopefully, some of you have been able to join the polling with the instructions. So, welcome to Planning Board Training, Get What Your Community Deserves. When Sarah was nice enough to reach out to me a few months back and ask if I would do another training, and she asked if, and I said yes, and she said, could you focus on planning board roles, responsibilities, skills, you know, whatever you think would help planning board service? And given the topic, I enlisted my colleague Molly Guardioso. Molly can talk a little bit more about herself, but Molly was on the City of Rogers for Planning Commission. I've served on the Village of Hilton Planning Board as a member and as the chairperson for a term and a half, I think. So, we also have that experience that all of you are currently doing in your public service on planning boards and any other boards that might be represented here today. Our agenda for this afternoon, I keep wanting to say this evening because I'm used to night meetings, Molly and I will do a little bit more introductions. We're going to talk about goals, what we want to accomplish today in our time together, you know, the why and how important your vision is to planning board roles, responsibilities, and functions, and the what, what is the actual development review process? What are some of the nuts and bolts of it? How is it conducted at the planning board level specifically? And then, again, how is your role as a planning board member impact this process? And then finally, any other thoughts that we may have or that you may have? So, I know it's hard with the interface, but feel free to ask questions throughout. Just use the chat function. And, you know, we figured we got about an hour and 10, 15 minutes of material. We have not gone through it, so it might be a little longer, a little shorter than that, but we're going to try to leave questions at the end. And if no one has any questions, everyone get back to their day a little early. So, with that, we'll get started.
And I just want to add too, if you have not been able or kind of jumped in before you were able to see the slide, this information will be up at the top of any slides we use with polling. So, you can enter that there. Just remember you have a text option, which is the bottom one here, or you can connect via that link at the top.
This is one question from Phyllis Jones, having trouble logging in. Phyllis, I'm assuming you mean in the polling, that won't impact whether you get credit or not. You know, Sarah's got the record in terms of who's here and who's not. So, in terms of getting training credit, I think Sarah will make sure that happens for all of you.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. So, again, my name is John Steinmetz. I work with Barton and La Judas. I'm a community planning consultant with 25-plus years' experience. And as I said, Molly can introduce herself in a minute. I've done most of my career in upstate New York. I've done some work in Pennsylvania and downstate near New York City, but I would say 95% of my career has been, you know, between Albany and Buffalo. So, I'm very familiar with the issues facing villages, towns, small cities, you know, the communities that make up upstate and western New York and the southern tier. So, we've got a lot of different experiences as planning consultants and also volunteers. So, if at any point you have questions about anything that you say, you know, John or Molly, however you handle this or that, you let us know. We're, Molly and I are self-professed planning and zoning nerds and geeks. And as I said, we're both served on review boards, but also Molly worked for the, has had public sector experience. I worked with the City of Rogers Planning and Zoning Office for a time. So, we actually have a lot of different perspectives when it comes to development review and project review. With that, I'll let Molly introduce herself.
All right. John covered a lot of it, but I am also a community planning consultant and working with John for seven or eight years now at this point. I started my career out in Ohio and then came back. And so, like John, I've been working across upstate and western New York with most of my projects. And one of the things that I really am passionate about and have come to be, you realize, is one of the most important things about what we do is to help enable the decision makers, whether it's, you know, staff members, board members, review board members, help you feel more comfortable and understand New York State law, what's asked of you, and what the potential is for what you can do. So, you know, that's one thing I really try to focus on is making sure you have the right tools and guidance to really get the best out of your jobs.
Brief background on Barton and La Judas for B&amp;L. We're a multidisciplinary planning, engineering, and landscape architecture firm. I think we've got 13 different practice areas. And, you know, one of the things that we really strive for is to help municipalities achieve their goals. 99% of our clients are public sector clients. We work almost exclusively with governments and governmental partners. And one of the things we do really well, and we really strive to help communities with, in order to implement most of the designs and most of the projects that communities envision, you need funding. So, one of the things we spend a lot of time and energy on is grantsmanship. We do a lot of financial assistance, acquisition, drafting, acquiring, administering, you know, we kind of really emphasize the soup-to-nuts funding approach for municipal governments. Specifically today, Molly and I are in our planning practice area. We spend our days working on conference of plans, waterfront plans, transportation, corridor studies, pedestrian and bicycle studies, some rural planning efforts, ag and farmland protection, and we do a fair amount of review board assistance like we're going to talk about today. And then, we probably spend, I would say, over a third of our time updating various code sections, usually zoning codes, but sometimes subdivisions, sometimes completes trades, sometimes other things. This is kind of the breadth of our experience geographically when it comes to code writing. We just chose a code writing one. We could have showed us a planning graphic, but essentially, this is kind of our reach when it comes to our code writing prowess over the last decade or so.
All right. So, with that, we come to our first poll for you. We kind of just want to get an understanding of who's in the Zoom, so to speak. We know a lot of you, and the focus today is on planning boards or planning commissions, but just if we could get an idea, so go ahead. If you're texting, enter that number or that letter, excuse me, via the text, or obviously select if you have it on your phone screen or desktop screen. Okay. I know we have more than five people on, so we'll give people a couple minutes to, or a minute or so to figure this polling out.
Few people are texting, not texting, chatting in.
Yeah, so you have to make sure the chat won't necessarily count, although obviously we can just visually check that, but it won't show up in the numbers on the screen. So, again, if you can get into, set up that chat or that text via your phone or go to that web address at the top, you can do that.
I'm just visually keeping track of the chat messages for this one. So, we've got four, four other people under Planning Commission Board or Member.
And many, many planning board members here. We also got another D in the Q&amp;A. All right. So, we'll move on, and obviously, you know, as you go through, there'll be more opportunities to kind of get through the polls. So, the other question we have for you is what kind of municipality that you serve in? So, obviously, that's town, village, city, county. Not sure if we'd have any, have any others in terms of the legislative opportunities.
Good county representation. Don't always see that.
Yeah, that's good. We got, we got a double here. Somebody's B and D. It's great, serving on both. I assume you're serving on both boards. All right. So, that's good. That's about what we thought. So, you know, that's, that's helpful to us. As we go through, we have a lot of examples. It's hard, obviously, as you all know, there's a lot of difference between village environments and town environments. So, some of our examples, we apologize, are geared towards one or the other, but, you know, hopefully, it'll pull sort of the general message out from that. So, the next thing that we could, if you could do it real quickly, again, text in maybe one to four words of why you chose to serve, or, you know, again, type that in on your browser, or, again, I actually like the solution of using the chat too, so feel free to do that if you find that to just be easier. Community, on a serve, that's good. Give back, help with progress, retiring, you have the time, that's good. Help with development, make it a good place, clean.
I like that. I would rather, Jim said, I would rather lead than be led.
That's good.
In the chat, that's another good one.
Yeah, this is good. So, a lot of, you know, growth, a lot of positivity, clearly, a lot of trends in wanting to make change. So, that's exactly what we're looking to help you do today. So, with that, to that end, what we hope to achieve is increase your understanding of the overall development review process of those that you may be a part of, give you an idea of your role, role, powers, and parameters. We do find frequently that there are communities that their code may be a little out of sync in terms of New York State law or other expectations in terms of those elements. So, we kind of just want to give you an overview of some best practice and, and options as how you do that. We want to give you some legally sound decision-making tools so that you obviously can, can issue your decisions with confidence and find that, you know, that can readily be defended if, you know, you should ever get in the unfortunate situation of litigation. Increasing, like I said, the understanding in New York State requirements and regulations. And we're going to give you some application examples. So, you know, keep you thinking as we go through how it might be applicable to you or your opinion. And as again, John said in the beginning, you know, clarify if we say things or we're kind of using some jargon maybe that you're not sure of, please feel free, use the chat, type in some questions, hopefully, we can address those. And then, the other ask is, as we were talking about this generally, we know that a lot of communities have a little bit different process, right? Or some, some boards handle certain things. Planning Commission might do special use permits. Zoning boards might do special use permits. Some communities might not have a planning board. So, just kind of work with us to understand that the general idea and parameters as we go through and how the general process or best practice is recommended.
Yeah, I think that what's, just to piggyback on what Molly said, I think I would consider this training almost a 201 training, to use college class terms. We, we do a lot of 101 training where we've added a little complexity to this one, not, not overly complex, but a little bit more, given we, we thought, based on what Sarah was sharing with us, that it would be planning board members, so we could do a little deeper dive into typical planning board functions. So, that's what we're going to do. So, you know, we'll be curious to hear your feedback over the next week or two to see if we went, you know, too, too complicated or not complicated enough and not detailed enough. So, by all means, give Sarah feedback over the next week or two. So, it didn't surprise me with the answers that everyone had shared in terms of why you chose to serve. I think they reflect why I chose to serve on various boards in my, or throughout my career, and Molly as well. I mean, you get involved in planning boards at every level to make the place you care about better. I mean, I think that's the, the crux of it. So, in order to do that, you need the right tools. You need, you know, New York State law is an incredible tool that you can use to your advantage, but also you need local tools such as documents that will contain your vision. It can be a single document, like a conference of plan. It can be a series of documents, like a conference of plan, waterfront plan, maybe a farmland and a protection plan, and things of that nature. So, once you have your vision established in these documents, and then ultimately, hopefully, they filter down into your zoning code and your review procedures, and then ultimately, your staff and you as board members administer your vision on a day-to-day, month-to-month basis throughout your role on the planning board. So, I can't, you know, the planning board, regardless of whether you do site plans, special permits, or other case may be, you have a key role in implementing your vision and achieving that vision.
And I just want to note again, too, that we are going to refer to things in zoning. We are, like John said, zoning nerds, but that also does include land use laws or general development regulations if you, specifically, your community has not adopted, has chosen not to adopt zoning. Nothing wrong with that, they're just different tools. So, we'll just be using shorthand or zoning or code for that.
So, according to New York State law, whether it's city law, town law, village law, all you miss, all you miss is municipal, easy for me to say today, land use regulations must be in accordance with a conference of plan adopted pursuant to this section. So, if you have a conference of plan, and if you have zoning, or if you have zoning and you have a conference of plan, regardless of how you say that statement, they need to be in sync. Not on day one, I mean, you're allowed to take time. If you update your plan, clearly, the law understands you need to take time to update your code. Your code doesn't magically update itself on day one. So, that is kind of inherent in the law and in the practice, but they do need to be reconciled and complementary to each other. And you need to think about what kind of spectrum of control you want to have as a community, because there's no one answer. New York State law gives guidance, but they don't give the final answer. And New York State is a homeroom state, so you, there's actually a lot that municipalities can do to kind of define their own course and their own direction. And we love this graphic that we've come up with, you know, kind of the spectrum. The image on the left is Houston, which is, for us planning geeks, are, it's famous because it's one of the largest communities I can think of that has no zoning, so they have no land use control. And I'm not judging whether that's good or bad, but you can see the implications of it, where you've got the adult bookstore, the department store to the back, and then the skyscraper right behind that. So, in terms of consistency of land use and vision, they really don't have it. It's literally the Wild West in Houston, and that's the way they like it, and that's the way they have it. So, that's one extreme. The other extreme would be San Francisco, I would say, where you can't do anything without some kind of special approval. There's essentially no by right uses in San Francisco. So, typically, most of our clients in upstate New York want to be somewhere in between. They want some control over certain uses based on historical circumstances or, or some reason that they have for that level of control, and they want to have less control over other things. So, you can essentially slide the spectrum wherever you want to for your town or village. So, we want to talk a little bit about your vision and get some thoughts and kind of get your wheels turning a little bit about character and design and development, because essentially, planning boards are development review boards. I mean, you meet to review other people's ideas for investment or property. So, you deal with, and you're the stewards of changes in property. So, we want to get your thoughts through a visual survey. Paul knows, and some of our clients, we do this with a lot of our projects, we do lengthy visual surveys. We're going to do a much shorter version with you today, just to kind of get your feedback and get your wheels turning on things like building scale and location, landscaping and screening, parking. We didn't do much with signage today, but we want to get your thoughts on, you know, geez, I really like the image on the left, or I don't like the image on the right, through the polling. So, we want to help, have you help us determine things that you like and don't like when it comes to potential developments in your community. You know, when you see change in your community, would you say, geez, I would really like it if that was built in my town or village, or I don't want to see that anywhere near my house? You know, so that's kind of the thought process behind this visual survey.
And one implication that has to, if I can just add quickly, as part of this, you know, get, get thinking as you're looking at these images, the character that your community might have, not saying that's going to be depicted in these images, but just think about that, the type of character that you have now versus what you might want it to be, and thinking about, like John said, that spectrum of regulation. If there's something that you see or differences you see in these images that for your community you feel are a got to do, that might be a situation where you need to go back to your plans or your codes and make sure that that specific style, I don't mean like architecture, but, you know, maybe building location, things like that, is supported, and you have the ability to enforce those, like we'll go over in some of our example applications.
So, using your polling, so Molly, they just pull A or B?
Yes.
To take their choice. So, we're asking you if it's a project that someone came to your community and said, look, I'm looking to propose housing, residential housing development, what would you prefer it look like in your community? Maybe not everywhere, maybe it's a certain place, but given someone, John Steinmetz comes to you and says, hey, I want to build 50 homes, and I want them to look like the ones on the left or the ones on the right, which one would your preference be? And you're allowed not to have one.
See, a lot of Bs coming in through the chat and Q&amp;A.
And while we're waiting for this, the results in a moment, B, the next question we're going to ask is why. So, for those of you who have already voted, just write in a word or two or three in the chat, you know, why you chose B. And so far, I think everyone chose B. It's unanimous. Okay. That's never happens. So, I'm just going to see. And while we're waiting for any thoughts that you might have, these are some images we typically use in some of our visual surveys, and I can, I will share with you what we typically hear from, from client communities is the one on the right has, oh, here's a, to have more landscaping and grass on the right, to have a little land between each property, more landscaping, more greenery, lower density, more character. So, that's, that's spot on. That's what we typically hear. You know, the houses on the left tend to have, again, lack of street trees. The houses tend to be not quite as architecturally interesting. The ones on the right have porches and columns and architectural detailing. And again, you picked up on it, more landscaping, more screening. And actually, one of the other things, we do a lot of these with a lot of different images, one of the things, and we're not anti-garage, but one of the things that does make a difference in scores is the presence of garages on the left tends to negatively impact the streetscape compared to the image on the right. So, every little bit counts when it comes to character and streetscapes and walkability. So, let's move on to the next one.
Move it for me, one second.
Don't take your time.
Oh, there we go.
So, again, two other images. This one, the density is a little different, whereas the last one, all those houses in the last pairing were pretty close together. This one, a little different, so the, either the houses on the left, A, little further apart, houses on the right, B, a little closer together, a little different character and densities. These houses were, these two projects are, one is upstate New York, one is central Virginia, but they're both built around the same time. They're both about 20 years old. So, that's, one's not newer than the other. They're both actually pretty similar vintage. We're seeing some Bs, some As, more As.
That's good. Someone said the architecture is more reflective of their community.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
More people coming in. And I know, based on experience, what we've heard is that the image on the left, some people like the larger lot, some people like the separation, some people like the larger lot size. On the right, some people like the smaller lot size and kind of the architecture, as someone mentioned, and some of the intimacy of that streetscape.
I like someone said, B for character, but A could eventually be good with some work. Let's foreshadow it.
Sharp eye. Yep, good word. And I see Jim said, design standard versus none. So, then, when we think about low-density residential, low-density residential is in the eye of the beholder. We could argue about it all day long, and it would really be kind of fun. So, when you think about these three different lower-density streetscapes, landscapes, you know, what kind of, what jumps out at you in terms of, geez, I really like one of them over the other, and why, if you want to share that with the chat? So, on the left, you've got homes on, oh, three to five acre lots, lower middle, you've got one acre lots, one and a half acre lots, sometimes two, and then in the upper right, you've got a, you know, farm homestead. I'm in farming in Amish country, so C for Tom.
All right. Okay. C.
Rural character.
Pretty much split between A and C. Okay. Oh, I got a B.
Multi-family residential. In this particular example, they're both townhouse projects, similar densities, similar scale, similar parking, remarkably similar projects, just designed differently. Karen says landscaping on the left is, that is needed. You can tell it's a planning board crowd.
Oh.
No, there's one.
Nobody feel peer pressure.
Yeah, no. Toss up from either is good. Okay. Another multi-family residential. The one on the left is in Webster, New York. Don't, don't rate it negatively because of snow, just imagine it without snow if you can. We got to get another, a fresher image. But that's a, that one is actually condos. So, those are owner-occupied attached units. And you can see, you've got the garages out front. On the right, those are actually multifamily houses, structures. So, each of those, the White House, the yellow and the red on the right-hand side, those are multi-unit apartment buildings. So, Molly, can I remember, they're what, four and six unit structures in that?
Somewhere between four and six in each one, yep.
Yes. So, both multifamily, just again, the, the design approach is very different between the two.
Okay.
Let's see if there's any. I prefer off-street parking.
Okay.
And no garages in front, meaning less character. Okay. Better architecture. All right. Moving on to commercial and mixed-use settings. So, this is highway commercial, you know, this is an intense commercial corridor where you'd have your McDonald's and Burger Kings and things of that nature. So, you've got the corridor on the left versus the corridor on the right. Again, the, the businesses along these streets are remarkably similar. They're just laid out very differently. So, we just want to get your thoughts on this type of development pattern and if there's a preference among the group.
Lots of Bs coming in.
Lots of Bs.
So, B not only looks like it is planned better, but also safer, there are not so many curb cuts. Somebody's been to a training before.
Mm-hmm. Trees. Okay. A couple more left. So, try to do an apples-to-apples comparison. So, $2 general stores built in the last decade. Kind of felt self-explanatory, they sell the same stuff, they're owned by the same corporation, you know, sites laid out a little differently in terms of how their approach design-wise. What are your thoughts? And scores?
None of the above.
Tough crowd. Tough one. Yeah.
Okay.
Now, this is focusing just on the storefront itself. These are two older structures, 100-plus years old. The one on the left, there's a more modern facade put on the first floor. The one on the right, the encore building, has a traditional facade, essentially left intact. So, is there a preference amongst the group in terms of how these facades have been treated over the years? Almost identical to the last, different, different question, but same split. Thank you. And this one's a little all over the board, but just kind of, again, I'll get your thoughts in terms of larger footprint projects. So, you've got, image A is a large infill project. It's a mixed-use project in a, in an urban neighborhood, retail on the first floor, three-story commercial above. B is your one-story Walmart Plaza, and then C is similar to A, it's got residential offices above and retail below. What's interesting about some of these too is especially C, we see a lot in village settings to gauge sensitivity to height. You know, sometimes we'll have clients say, I love C, it's just a little too tall, too tall for my village, or it's too massive for my village, but it looks like everyone likes C. Okay.
I got a B.
There's a B.
And somebody put C, I want a C minus. Grading it.
Now, the short of it, before we get into the words on the slide, you know, when we do that with clients and with groups like this, that my short answer to what your role is, is that my short answer to what your role is, is to make sure the high-scoring stuff happens. So, you know, your role as a board member, Molly and I are going to talk about tools and techniques, and you've got Seeker, and you've got all these things we're going to cover very quickly in the next half an hour, 45 minutes. But the bottom line is legally and ethically, your role is to try to get that higher-scoring stuff to happen as much as possible, when possible. So talking about your level of influence, the good news is you all play a very important role in the review process. And I hope you know that. Your decisions are vital to protect community character and improving community character. And some of you, especially in this room, as legislators and planning board members, you have the ability to affect change that goes beyond the code. You guys are allowed to function in the gray area of the code. So if the code has words like acceptable or adequate, which we'll talk about later, it's your job to determine what adequate means from a site design perspective, for, for example. But with this power comes great responsibility and also the opportunity to potentially mismanage the review process. And we're not criticizing, we see review processes mismanaged more often than not. And even by, when I was on the planning board chair, every once in a while, the attorney would call me and say, hey, John, you did a procedural error at the last meeting. And I really appreciated those phone calls because it would allow us to become better as a board and me to become smarter as a planning board chairperson. So you've really got to take the process seriously, even though it can be kind of tedious. And then it's, we didn't have any on here, I don't think. We didn't have any ZBA members today. But we just wanted to point out that, for example, whereas planning board members and planning commission members have more discretion and they operate in the gray area oft, more often than not, the ZBA rarely, if ever, operates in the gray area when it comes to setbacks and area variances, for example. You know, they're, they're very much a black and white kind of ruling body.
I'm gonna qualify that in the statement that if you don't have a planning board, or for example, like I said before, your zoning board is the one that looks at things like site plans or special use permits, then you have a little bit more latitude like the planning board. But, you know, as we'll touch on here, the things that zoning boards have to do, variances, appeals, that there is no gray area there. As, you know, I'm sure some of you might know, but we're not going to cover those applications today. But those are the ones where you have to have, you have to comply with and follow the state's guidance for review criteria. So most common that we see is the, you as planning board members, the ones in charge of looking at site plan review. However, obviously that can fluctuate. The same with special use permits, and we'll kind of talk a little later on on why there is a benefit potentially to having the same board do both. And then obviously, like I said, zoning board is various appeals. Amendment process, if we have time, we'll touch on, is something ultimately that has to be decided on by, in this case, just at common council, but the legislative body. And then there is the opportunity for an advisory or guidance opinion from the planning board there. And then, and that's the required bodies to do that. So zoning board doesn't get involved there. And then you obviously have admin and enforcement.
Now Molly, there's one question. I don't know if you saw Sheri's question. Do planning boards usually make decisions on a site plan or are they most often advisory to the town board?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's, it's kind of split. It's up to what you want to do. Some communities say that the decision should be left to the legislative body. And then the planning board serves as advisory. I, in my opinion, I would say if you have a planning board, that planning board should be involved, at least involved in the process. So an advisory role is, is fine, or issuing final decision is fine. We just really feel like John said before, the latitude that you have in serving in that role does, does a better job in reaching things to the end. And on the other side of that coin is sometimes the legislative boards have a lot on their agenda. So we see a lot of communities saying, we, we don't want this anymore. We trust our planning board. We're going to have them do it, you know, them do it. So they, they kick it back. That's again, something we'll, we usually walk through and talk through with communities when we help them with their codes. So the two I already mentioned, we're focusing on our site plan review and special use permit. And if we have time, we'll, we'll touch on amendments as well. If you really want to go digging, the actual definitions are in New York State law. I spent a lot of time in there, very well, you know, accustomed to the legalese. But if you're looking for the shorthand, in this case, you know, this is essentially what we're talking about. If someone's coming in for site plan, they're essentially saying, I want to make a physical investment to some external feature of my property, building, site, whatever. And you've requested that I get approval for that. Special use permit, typically it's someone coming in and say, I'd like to do, I'd like to have this operation, this business, this use that you have stated you might not want unless I meet certain criteria. So those are kind of the two key ones. And then, you know, you've got your others at the side, which I won't dive in too much on those. But the last, for today's purpose, in case we get to amendments, it's essentially that your code, like we talked about in the beginning, it may be out of sync with your vision, with your plan or any guiding document, ag plan, comprehensive plan, whatever it may be. It might be out of sync. So this is an opportunity to put forth an application to rectify that. It's obviously more reactionary opportunity, but still, you know, important nonetheless to make sure you're letting the right things happen. So going into the how, now we'll dive right into these processes that we talked about. We'll start with special use permits as part of this. Just to give you a little context here, and I'm sure many of you are already aware of this, there needs to be a trigger in your code or local law that says a use requires the issuance of a special permit. So for example, this is Town of Chautauqua's code. And right within their, our district, don't hold it against me if I'm wrong. I believe it was rural residential. But essentially, the idea is, you know, those uses listed one through five require special use permit. And in this case, a little different, like we talked about before, that the town board ultimately issues as part of that process. So that's your trigger. You'll find that in many different places within your codes. The general review process for this obviously starts with that's middle of the application. Whoever receives that, whether it's a clerk, code enforcement officer, whoever should make sure that all of that material, that's the required material, is provided. And what I mean by that is literally look at your requirements and serve it as a checklist. At this stage, avoid any commitment or statement to the effect of your application is complete. Because that starts to have implications for later on down the road. If you want additional information, if you're, you know, looking for some modifications and things like that, it also starts some review time constriction starts the clock on those. So it is important to think about that as you're taking the applications. And that's a big one to look through your codes to make sure that there's no unintended implication there as well. In special use permits, you are required, no matter what board it is, town board, zoning board, planning board, you have to hold, missing the H there, hold a public hearing as part of this process. And then in terms of, so unless your quote says otherwise as there is, take a look for that. Because if you're not requiring that public hearing process, again, that's out of sync with the New York State law and you can ultimately get challenged on your decision because of missing that step. You obviously utilize Seeker as part of this process, any county referral that you might need to make. We kind of left those out of this because it does complicate the process a little bit. But those are obviously part of your purview and necessary steps. You make a resolution. This is where that first part comes in, to accept and say the application's complete. And then finally can issue your decision. As you know, there's a lot of special use permit processes that may also require site plan review, which we'll address in a minute. Your general view criteria. So this is from Town of Pamfret's code. In this case, it's a good example of kind of the key issues, right? It's, it's traffic, it's safety, it's the health of your community, it's, you know, is it being served by, will it be able to be served adequately by utilities? Are there, you know, undue burdens on school districts, on costs, you know, to the municipality? Are you protecting the environment? Is there a potential for nuisance with adjacent uses or the neighborhood? The character of the neighborhood, preserving any, any lands that you want to, and ultimately, obviously, the aesthetics of the property. So your code may differ from this, but these are generally the criteria you want to look at. And if you look at Seeker, the part two of the Seeker long form has a very good essentially listing of the different kinds of impacts that you should be looking at. So if you don't have this guidance in your code, don't panic. You can default to the Seeker list if you'd like. So as part of this process, you may negotiate for mitigating measures. Maybe their request comes in, it's too intense, and you, you know, you want them to adjust a little bit to make sure that you're reducing the impact scale down the use, et cetera. Your decisions, when you're saying yes, obviously you're, you're saying it's okay as proposed. Obviously, you can approve it and say, well, you know what? We want you to reduce the footprint or reduce the number of parking spaces or have increased landscaping. And obviously, if you say no, you're essentially saying it's, it's not appropriate and it's inconsistent with what you want. The big difference that I want to emphasize here is that when you permit for, or when you permit and approve a special use permit, it's permitted as proposed. So, you know, you want to make sure that your, any conditions or parameters are listed on the actual written decision. This, a great example we use is an auto sales situation. Maybe they come in and say, our, our sales lot is going to be 50 cars. Down the line, they want to up that, 75, 100 spaces for their cars. If you don't have that explicitly stated in your decision and the condition, the scale of the operation they mentioned, you might have a harder time getting them to come in and look at it for another review because of that expansion. And that expansion maybe could have huge impact. And also just to note that this differs from a use variance and that if you were to issue a use variance, that's permanent. So you can always revisit a special use permit at some point in time. They, they can expire. They can, you know, become non-conforming. Use variances cannot. So that's a big key. And use variances, in our opinion, should be one of the hardest things to get within your community. So special use permit requirement, I apologize, I want to give John a little bit of time. So I'm going to go a little quickly through this. But looking at your special use permit, in this case, this example is, you know, you're in a generally, you know, a more dense, traditional neighborhood here, which directly borders sort of this commercial environment. So you kind of see the line of demarcation where the code, code goes. But in this case, these houses are actually zoned within the C2 district. So everything that's, that's permitted here is also permitted here. What's proposed, so you've got a vacant lot here right next to this house and between this house and this house, is an auto body repair shop. It is required to have a special use permit. As part of this, looking at what could happen, again, in terms of the context, you see here the street view of essentially a single-story, two single-story houses on either side of the lot. And this is what's across the street. Again, single-story residential uses. So my first question for you is, as you're looking at an application, like a special use permit, which question here is something that should not be a factor in your decision? Which essentially, which question is not within your purview to ask? We got a question on what is the C2 district? The community example that we use, that's essentially they're a general commercial district. So they, they sort of, anything goes.
Most permissive.
Yeah, most permissive, and it's pretty regional commercial, for example. So we got everybody on A. Well, you all pass. So that, that is the correct answer. So now looking at that example that I gave, a potential auto body shop in that parcel in between those two houses there that are abutting, the more commercial uses, how would you decide on that special use permit application? Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah, so we've got a lot of approval conditions. Okay. Good. So I see we have a, someone asked the, so general municipal law, New York State general municipal law is where you'll find that requirement 239M for referring applications to the county. And we said that this is, has been an issue. So one thing to note is unless you have a specific agreement with the county, you should be sending all of your special use permit or site plan applications, code amendment applications, basically anything that you're looking at as, as a board, to your county planning department or regional planning, or county planning board or regional planning board. By law, you cannot make a decision, you cannot render your decision until you give the approval or the, excuse me, until you get the approval or determination from the county or that board. And they are required to do so within 30 days. So typically, most counties are obviously very compliant with that. It's very helpful to make sure you've checked all your boxes. So make sure that you really are paying attention to following through with that review process. And you can initiate that as, when the application comes in. And you, you know, the applicant typically fills out part one of Seeker, send that along to the county, and you can conduct your review alongside that process. Okay. So now I'll hand it up.
Now the fun stuff, Molly. Site plan review. When I, when I worked for the City of Rochester, I did probably three, I was a site plan review coordinator. So I did probably 300 site plan reviews in my time there and really enjoyed the process and, and the back and forth between applicants and the city to result in better projects. So as Molly said earlier, you know, the, the basic point of site plan review is someone wants to make generally physical exterior changes to their property, to the, potentially the exterior of the building or the site conditions. And that's where a site plan review comes in. The, one of the things I love about site plan review is that the triggers, what causes things to go into site plan review and how they're reviewed in terms of what are their criteria, are completely up to each community. New York State law kind of gives the communities the, the ability to determine what the triggers are. So for example, we've had some communities that have a blanket trigger that says, all new construction requires site plan review. Doesn't matter if it's a single-family home, doesn't matter if it's a McDonald's, doesn't matter what it is. You're building something new, it's a site plan review. Now, some of these same codes tend to be a little gray on, is, is an addition, new construction. I guess that's in the eye of the beholder. So all new construction is, is a trigger we have found in a number of codes. But you can also get much more specific than that. You can get, it's very specific in terms of physical setting. So we, one of the site plan review triggers I've seen in the past was any development within 500 feet of the Genesee River. So again, trying to protect the watershed, trying to protect the river and the impact development might have on the river is, was a trigger that I thought had a lot of merit. You can also focus on districts. So for example, a lot of, a lot of the villages and cities we work in, people are very fond and protective of the downtown buildings and those traditional environments and those traditional downtown streetscapes. So we've seen some communities, just as a statement of policy, say, anything in this, any activity in the central business district, internal or external, requires site plan reviews. So that's another approach. It can be district-based. You can also have some kind of incentive-based setup. So for example, the City of Rochester, they're, one of their triggers says, any proposed building improvements that do not meet our building and/or site design criteria require a site plan review. So what the inverse of that means, if you meet our criteria, you don't need site plan review. And the best example I can give you is that photo here on the slide. That was a $10 million-plus-dollar project, condos, mixed-use, East End, very high-value real estate project. It met all the design criteria that the city had at the time. So that project was permitted in 35 days, application to permit 35 days. And that was because it essentially didn't need site plan review because it met all the criteria. So that's, that is one way you can incentivize good development in your community. You can also attempt to identify, and we think should identify exempt actions. Again, be as clear as you can. These, these actions, if you're just repairing masonry or painting a building in downtown, for example, you don't need site plan review. You can also create different tracks of site plan review. You can have a major and a minor. So minor site plan review might have a, a smaller notification requirement. Maybe some minor site plan reviews only notify within 100 feet of the property. And major site plan review might notify within 300 to 500 feet of the property. Major site plan review may require a public hearing, minor may not. So you can really calibrate your local site plan review process to be whatever makes the most sense for your community. In general, the, the review process for site plan reviews, you know, across the state, what we've run into, pretty common to have some kind of optional sketch plan conference. So someone can come in with an idea saying, this is what I'm thinking about, planning board. What do you think? You know, before I spend money on hardcore engineer drawings or something like that, let us, let me know if I'm going in the right direction or if there's some obvious improvements that you would like to see me make before you even get started. And from there, the board may request additional. And from there, the board may request additional materials, traffic impact study, for example, for more complicated projects, you can waive materials, for example, maybe it's a, it's a small project that does not require a traffic impact study, so, again, trying to be applicant-friendly. The board may hold a public hearing, again, site plan review is one of the few processes in state law that do not require a public hearing, so you do not have to have a public hearing as part of site plan review. I think it's good practice to do often, but you don't have to have it by law. And as Molly mentioned before, the board determines when an application is actually complete, to come, to deem to be complete, and then the board issues the decision, whether it's a preliminary site plan review decision or a final site plan review decision, which we can talk about later in the Q and A if you're interested in that. The board, the board itself actually issues issuing board, whether it's town board, village board, planning board, whatever the issuing body is, they make the final decision. And then if it requires a special permit in addition to site plan review, we'll talk about that double combination thing a little bit later. So what are the factors that go into a site plan review decision? You may require changes necessary to meet code requirements, so a site plan review is a legal negotiation between the board and the applicant. So you can say, look, if we don't like how you're treating the screening with the neighboring property, we want you to make changes to your site to, to beef that up or to increase it, something like that. And you, as the board, may also impose those additional requirements on an applicant to promote and protect orderly growth and sound development of your community. So I was always a big fan of leveraging the code, leveraging Seeker, doing what you, what you, the tools you had available, and what you needed to do legally, ethically, to get the best project you can. Every community has their own review criteria, and this is by, by no means exhaustive, but I kinda conglomerated them and smashed a bunch of them together in terms of what we've seen and then what we actually think is good practice. So first and foremost, you wanna acknowledge that you want the site plans to be in conformance with the code requirements. You want the site, yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just wanna add something real quick on that, because, again, like, there's a difference in use variance with special use permits. Like John said, this is a more flexible process, so this is an opportunity to avoid an area variance if an applicant, you know, is, is looking to go forward, that if you can negotiate and bring it into code, you know, you can't waive the requirement entirely, but you could bring it clo, into the compliance with the code, so it might be an opportunity to nudge them in the right direction to reduce that additional review for them, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, we can talk a little bit later, someone will remind me if there's time to talk about sequencing events in terms of approvals, because you gotta be careful giving. Huh?
We got that at the end.
Okay, we'll take it at the end, so back to general review criteria. So the other thing you wanna make sure is, how, how do you make this site plan in conformance with the COM plan or the LWRP, so the, the local waterfront revitalization plan or ag and farmland protection plan? So you wanna make sure you take those documents into account when you're looking at these individual site plans. And then you look at the, the basics, you gotta look at, is there adequate water service, sewer service, whether septic, public, whatever the case may be, is the drainage taken care of, are you making sure you're not draining water on an adjacent property that the owner doesn't own? Is the lighting gonna be dark sky compliant, you wanna make sure you cover those nuts and bolts things, you wanna make sure that ingress and egress of motor vehicles is safe and efficient. But then you wanna talk about some things that are, again, a little more gray area, where this is where it's more art than science sometimes. Words like adequacy and phrases, adequacy of landscaping and screening, what does that mean? We're gonna talk about that in a minute. Adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian bicycle access and circulation, and compatibility and other software compatibility with adjacent building orientation design and transitional treatments. So some of this is engineering, water, infrastructure, sewer, drainage, some not. So, but the implications of your decisions are, yes, we love this site plan, we're gonna approve it as submitted. Yes, we like this site plan, but we wanna see some changes made, so we're gonna put some conditions on it. Or no, despite your best efforts, your, your site plan is just not compatible with our code and our community as proposed. So the results of approval are, use and improvements on the property are permitted as you agreed upon with the applicant, and no further changes are needed or proposed. So give a example here, and again, another community, not in the southern tier, we try to keep it remote, away from all of you, so we didn't accidentally pick on someone's property and get everyone upset with us with someone in the room. So this is another, same community Molly talked about earlier, the same, same district, it's a C two district, a commercial district that allows drive-throughs and things of that nature. So let's say I'm the developer and I wanna put a new Dunkin' Donuts on this corner, so I've got an option to buy these two parcels, I wanna knock down these two buildings, and I wanna put a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through on this corner, which per code requires site plan review. So option one, you've got Dunkin' Donuts A, where the building is set back from the street, you've got parking in front, then you've got to drive through around the west side of the building. Option two?
No.
Oh, sorry. So, so go back to option one, Molly, sorry, so we're gonna have you score this, so take a look at this real, real fast, you've got the building to the left, west in this case, drive-through to the west side of the building, you've got parking to the east, facing the, the north-south route, and then you've got a curb cut on Ridge Road to the south. So this is essentially the, the main pieces, parking, building, access, egress. As proposed, how, if someone proposes this in your community, how would you respond to it, that's what we're gonna ask you now?
There we go.
Now, real quick, for those of you who wanted approved modifications in the chat, in a word or two, what modifications would you be looking for? This is the only part that kills me about Zoom, I just wanna have this conversation. All right, we'll move on, Molly.
About that later.
So safety of traffic and stoplights, walkability, okay?
Something with the slides is getting funky.
No, that's weird. Stormwater compliance, Edward said.
Let me. Here we go.
If you, if we don't, if we can't do a polling for the last couple.
I got it. Sorry about that.
Nice save. So option B, same corner, it's a northwest corner, major, major east-west street beneath it, major north-south street to the right of it. Same program, it's a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. So in this particular example, I'm proposing the Dunkin' Donuts building up to the corner, replacing the sidewalk in the front, I've got some outdoor seating, I want some outdoor seating for my, for my customers out front, so that people watch, it's a nice corner, and we've got the drive-through around the back, and then the parking to the north. And we try to do a little bit of landscaping to screen the parking, so in that scenario, how would you decide, how would you vote for approval, approve the modifications or deny the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner with the building up to the street? Hold on. Most A, we got a B from William. Yeah, I'm just making sure I'm not, no open questions. So hopefully, you've, oh, go ahead, next, I didn't, I forgot we had this question, Molly. So on this one, Molly, this is, you just type in a word or two.
Yeah, just type in a word or two, I, we kinda did that already, so, you know, maybe we'll get one or two people to type.
Yeah, between A and B, what were the factors that influenced your decision between those two site plans?
Trees, site lighting, safety, landscaping, placement of driveways, design, site issues, the building, design. So, presentation.
Neighborhood, good design, walkways.
Location of the drive-through.
Nice. So when you think about site plan, you know, one of the things we always try to encourage, if you're not already doing this, and most planning board members do, I think it's been my experience, as you, as you travel around the world, look at these things, I mean, look at, if you'd see treatments that you liked, and say, geez, I like how they did that. So as, as we remember earlier, I talked about some of the common review criteria are adequacy of landscaping and screening. So that's completely up to you, sometimes codes are very specific in terms of tree trees and the amount of landscaping, sometimes are quiet on what that means. So adequacy is, is one of the things that you need to determine through site plan review. So based on what we looked at earlier and based on some of the comments, I would argue that there are a lot of people in this group would say, the image on the left does not have adequate landscaping, because there is none. The image on the right, physically constrained site, very similar in terms of the fact that they had to get the parking in there, and they just didn't have enough real estate to do everything they wanted to do. So instead of landscaping on the right, they did a decorative brick wall and some low shrubbery, so they could at least have some physical separation between the parking and the, and the sidewalk. Looking at a different example for landscaping and screening, more, more traditional example, so the image on the left, you've got essentially, I don't know, ten feet of grass, maybe a little less. The image on the right, you've got parking adjacent to grass, but they also have clearly done trees, bushes, slight birmingham to kinda screen the parking, so I think the image on the right is probably one of the best landscaped parking lots I've ever seen in my twenty-five years of planning. So in terms of, is the one on the right adequate, I would say yes, is the one on the left adequate, that would be up to you. Looking at pedestrian and bicycle access, we're gonna focus more on pedestrian in these images, all three of these images have some form of pedestrian access. The plaza in the upper left, if you look real close, you can see the sidewalk right in front of the doors, so there's a sidewalk that goes down the entire length of that plaza. That's the, that's the pedestrian access in that site. Is that adequate, that would be up to you as a, as a site plan review board member. The McDonald's in the upper right has some striping that connects the public sidewalk to the front door. So you've got sidewalk into the parking lot, and then you've got that striped area that tells a motor vehicle, I gotta slow down, there's pedestrians potentially crossing here. So is that adequate pedestrian circulation, perhaps? Then you've kinda got the gold standard on the bottom, you've got Target that actually has a raised curved sidewalk going, is a spine that goes down through the middle of the parking lot to the front door. I would say that's probably the highest level of pedestrian circulation I've ever seen in a suburban site like this. So adequacy, are any of these adequate, are all of them adequate, that's up to you through site plan review to answer that question. Building design and context, this is a little different. Some communities get into building design and context and site plan review, some communities literally just stick to the site and don't really worry about necessarily the appearance or the proximity or the placement of the building. There's no wrong answer, but I think the communities that do talk about building, design and context and placement are trying to avoid things like this, so the idea of complementary, does this infill building complement and is it consistent with the two buildings on either side of it? I would say no, in my opinion, but again, that's just my, that's just my backseat quarterback, Monday morning quarterback opinion. Next slide, Molly. As comparison, here's a similar infill situation, but totally different solution. You've got a multi-story building in between these very traditional structures on this block. So where that used to be empty, and they put in a multi-story building between them, so I would say that's more in, in spirit of and consistent with the community's comprehensive plan and all the other neighborhood initiatives in this area.
Some might say that maybe the fourth story is too much, and you're concerned about density.
Yeah, and I was actually, to go in the weeds a little bit, I was, site plan review when this came through, there was a lot of conversation about that fourth story. And one of the reasons the roof line looks like the way it does, the initial design actually had a flat roof and brick all the way up to the corner, so the architect said we could do a mansard roof, which visually starts to lower the first, the fourth floor a little bit visually. Whether you agree with that or not, we talked about it over beer sometime, but that was the thought anyway. Last example of, you know, does an infill building complement the buildings around it? I think this is a pretty neat example of a one-story building in a very historic downtown-type setting. There are some things I would do a little differently, design-wise, but the building, even though it's a one-story building, they made it tall to try to complement the scale of the buildings next to it. And the reason I like this image is if you look in the background, the CBS pharmacy, you can see that was done in a time before they had design standards that required some kind of scale consideration. So that CBS is literally half as tall as it probably should be to complement what's around it. So old, old thinking the CBS, new thinking the building, the infill building on the left. So when you're thinking about site plan review, think about these two Dunkin' Donuts examples, think about, geez, what would we want in our community if a Dunkin' Donut came in? Or Starbucks or something else, or, or another corner property, would you want the corner to look like the image on the left or the image on the right? These are the things you as site plan review members, whether it's planning board, elected officials, are charged with answering these questions, and ultimately, you need to make sure your code helps you and doesn't work against you in these conversations.
I've had a lot of communities learn this lesson after having someone come in and the applicant, with the application that looks like this, which conforms with their code, and they have the conversation that they want this, but that requires the applicant to go get an area variance, so you know, as a result of that, this is ultimately what gets approved, but if this is your preference, you wanna make sure that you go in and you adjust your, you know, your site requirements and things like that, so that you're actually facilitating what you wanna get, if you, you know, if you said, we absolutely don't want this, you know, the code provides for this, so you wanna make sure you're addressing that.
Real quick case study, I'm not gonna go in for time, because you wanna have some Q and A. When I worked for the city, we had, was it, no, it was Wright, I wanna make sure he was Walgreens at first, the writing came, was proposed on this very urban corner. Molly, you can just go through, and next one. At the time, Wright still kinda looked like this, and they were just starting to come out with the next one, this, this model was just starting to show up here or there, but Wright weren't winning, weren't, weren't winning any architectural awards, and their proposal for this site was, and it's, it's a busy drawing, I apologize, I'm just gonna walk you through the highlights, the, the biggest thing to think about this was, oh, shoot, we don't have the other one, that's okay. Molly, go down, is it, no, that's okay, go back. So the, the, the original site plan actually had the loading docks along one of the major streets, so instead of building, they had trucks. And very, it was very easy for us to say, no, you can't have buildings, we can't have trucks along our major, major streets idling, unloading, things of that nature, that's a no. They wanted the shelving along the outside of their building, along the storefront, and they didn't want any windows on the storefront. And we said, no, that doesn't, that doesn't adhere to our code, that's a no. So we actually said, and we're not proud of this, this is just a fact, there were nineteen different no's during this conversation, and the it became a joke, we kept track of them, we weren't proud of them, we did track them, and at one point during the conversation, the, the developer, not, not the Wright, but the developer, said, John, I'm fine with you guys are doing, because if Wright says no, Walgreens is gonna say yes. So he was just manipulating his potential less ease to whatever building the city ultimately said he could build. The end result is, it's not award-winning, but pretty decent result, given where we started, next slide, Molly. So if you go down Monroe Avenue today in the city, this is what you see, so more of a traditional urban building, which makes sense in this setting, it doesn't make sense everywhere, this would not make sense in rural America. But in this setting, up to the street, walkable, high quality of design, two stories in height, awnings, traditional storefront windows with goods and services, you know, set back from the windows.
And, and this, I correct me if I'm wrong, but the second story that they have is actually not occupied, but it was built so that it could be in the future. The building could be reused if Wright were to leave, and then the next person wanted to actually establish apartments or offices or something above, at least the infrastructure was already there to make that happen.
Yeah, absolutely right, I mean, Wright did not want the second floor, they didn't want the potential exposures of residences above drugs and things, controlled substances. The developer said, John, I'm fine with the second floor, because someday Wright at least will terminate, and then I will occupy that with residential units. So there was a lot of push and pull on that, and the ultimate result is, as Molly said, it is an occupiable second floor at some point in the future.
All right, so as promised, we're gonna touch on really quickly, what happens when you have a special use permit or site plan application where you require both? So in this case, you know, a couple examples, it may be where you require a site plan for new construction, and it happens to be specially permitted use. Maybe it's just an application for a site, especially permitted use that has some level of exterior alterations. changing the parking lot of the site, building design, something like that. And obviously you can also, your code may also state different situations where that might exist. So we have a quick question in terms of, you know, what, in what order, so like you said before, suspend what you know your code may require, what order should you think, do you think site plan, excuse me, special use permit and site plan applications should be reviewed? So whether you review and decide upon them together as one decision, review the site plan first and then the special use permit, review the special use permit first and then do the site plan, or review them jointly and issue the decision separately? So you've got a lot of Bs. Bs, B, A. Okay. So we're almost all Bs here. So what we consider to be best practice, and we've seen a lot of communities who kind of veer from this, that end up in some unfortunate litigation situations and challenges, your special use permit application is submitted with obviously the site plan review components. We strongly recommend, obviously, you look at those concurrently. So this gets further complicated if you have one board looking at the site plan and one board looking at the special use permit. But the connection there, as we've talked before, if you're worried about the negative, you know, impacts of parking being right next to a residential use, you can mitigate that with landscaping as part of the site plan. So there is method to looking at those at the same time. It becomes much more challenging when you have two different boards doing it, however it is possible. You do still have to hold the public hearing on the special use permit, which, again, we recommend that include this site plan. And then ultimately, you want to issue your decision on the special use permit first. And the reason being there is if you, if you say that the use itself is not appropriate with the site, with the site plan that's being proposed, the move, the decision that you would make on the special, on the site plan, geez, a lot of S's, on the site plan would be moot. Right? You said the use can't happen, so forget the site plan. Forget going forward with the site plan at this point because there's, use can't happen. So that's more investment friendly. It's also a smarter situation on your end because you could end up in the unfortunate situation where you issue a decision on the site plan, and then the applicant's going to argue that the use itself is appropriate because you said the site plan was okay. So you want to, this is a nuanced situation, but you want to make sure that you're issuing that decision on the special use permit first. So that's why we really like it when it's the same board looking at the same one. But we do have communities we've seen where it's, you know, the planning board that does special, site plan review, and the town or village board does the special use permit, while the planning board could go through and look at that site plan and the special permit application. And then ultimately, you know, they could issue a recommendation or something to the town or village board, they would ultimately decide on the special use permit, and then you would follow with the site plan action. So I know that's confusing. If you have questions, we can talk about that. For sake of time, we'll just note, and this is something that you have to provide for as part of your code. If it's not specifically in your code, that's okay because it's referenced by New York State law. But this was the example I gave before, where maybe somebody wants to do something that your code doesn't allow, but you actually would potentially want that to happen. Like I said before, you know, your maximum setback requirement's too big. You want to see something come further. So, you know, maybe you learned your lesson after that application and realized, gotta adjust the code. That can be initiated by the planning board or the legislative board, or there are people, property owners, who could come in and petition for it. The amendment could happen to the text, to the map, or the final action, the final option, which is a very complicated process as well, is plan developments. Plan developments, although also sort of a use discussion, a site plan discussion, the ultimate decision is an amendment. So that's an important thing to consider. So like I said, that could be tax amendments, which you'll see in a lot of your codes if you know. Quick example here, this is a residential street here that literally every single one of these is a residential home. It backs up to a commercial, series of commercial uses. But the issue is, that someone noted, is that these properties are zoned the exact same as those commercial ones. And so that's saying that something like this could come in and bulldoze, you know, these houses and make this happen. And does that negatively impact, you know, these neighbors? Or is it inconsistent with your vision? So map amendment might be, let's rezone from commercial here to residential for the properties identified. I won't go through the process in detail, but essentially, the first action has to be, and it's planning board, unless you don't have a planning board, sewing board, but it has to be the planning board action to review and recommend action to the legislative board. You have to hold a public hearing, the town or village board holds that, and then you can issue your decision. So no other board except for the legislative board, yes, agreed. Definitely this is worth another session, conversation, as well as plan developments, like we talked about before. We do think those are very important. But ultimately, you know, in this case of amendments, because it is a legislative, local law or ordinance decision, it has to be done by that legislative board. And obviously, you can defer to your planning documents, use Seeker, use any studies you've done to help influence that decision. So when you say yes, you're saying, we get it, we're out of sync, let's rectify that. Or no, we're not allowing that for a reason. It doesn't align with our vision, so forget it. And that ultimately ends in an official supplement, addition, repeal, or change of your text of your code or those district boundaries. I won't go through this in detail because we kind of already made an example. Already mentioned this, but here's some follow-on pieces, like we talked about, using Seeker as a tool, making sure you're covering county referral. Those of you who have LWRP's, you are required as part of that by state, there is a local waterfront consistency review process that unfortunately further complicates all of these application procedures that we talked about. So again, that's something, you know, maybe in future trainings we could address. And then, like I said before, the also additional complex review process. I noticed in some of your codes, as kind of going through them, you do provide for this. It is a great tool, but like you said, it's, you know, it's a difficult thing to work around properly. So we can get through that. All right. 10 minutes to spare.
And Molly, stop sharing your screen. And I don't know, Sarah, if you can open up how you want to open up for questions, if you want to turn off mics or kind of moderate as best you can. But, you know, just, just in closing, I just want to make sure that it's, reiterate, make sure you understand and what Molly said at the end is extremely important. We mentioned Seeker probably what's five or six times in the last hour and a half. I know when I did site plan review for the city, the projects that we really didn't, that were bad for the city, I mean, there's no, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it, the business wasn't, the city wasn't anti-business, but there were some projects like used car lots in single-family districts and things like that. I mean, there are just some projects that are just a bad idea. And when that, when those came before us, we would use our code and use Seeker and as a double effort to say, look, you don't meet our code, we're going to fight you on that. And we're also going to declare a POS deck in Seeker. So I can't estimate enough how important Seeker is and how, what an incredible tool it can be to help you do your job. It can't solve or resolve or fix a weak code, but you can have weak code and use Seeker and still have success. With that, I'll shut up and let's have some questions.
So we do have one. What are some of the common mistakes planning board members make?
That's a good one. Procedurally, I'm going to let Molly talk about procedurally. I would say in terms of site plan review, I think not being stubborn enough personally. I mean, I think one of the greatest tools I think any planning board member has these days for site plan review is Google Images. If someone's proposing a family dollar, for example, in your community, and you're like, geez, can you do better than that? And they say no. It used to be, that was the, we didn't have any other way to check that. Now you just go Google Images, family dollar building, and you can find that they've done a nicer building in 10 other places. So why don't we warrant a nicer building? Or why don't we warrant that? So I think being, I think that one of the common mistakes I see is planning boards aren't stubborn enough. I think planning board members are good intentioned and are good-hearted people, and they want to be involved in the process, but they don't always want to get in a argument or a fight. And sometimes, some of the nicest projects that you may see or drive by in other places, you may not know the backstory, and you probably don't know the backstory of that, but there might be a fight behind that for that building or for that project. So I think being stubborn, I think is probably the thing I would like to see more of.
I'd add to that, I think the two things sort of procedurally, one, we see a lot is planning boards and zoning boards start to veer from their actual purview on applications. You know, it's Joe or, you know, Sarah, and we know them, we like them, we get what they're trying to do. So sure, let's go ahead and approve, you know, go ahead and approve it. The issue is, is that it may not always be Joe or Sarah who are operating that, or, you know, who are the next owners or whatever, who are going to be good stewards of the situation and the way that you want them to be. So that's one, you really want to stick to those parameters. Also, like we mentioned before, you know, the actual things that impact the site, and not things like financing. The second is putting the cart before the horse on your procedures and what you review. Be careful about, you know, how you're working through applications. If you need more information, ask for it. If you need clarifications, ask for it. Get them on the record to commit to things if they are, you know, you can't regulate hours of operations per se, but if they come in as part of their application and say, well, we only plan, right, this is great for special use permit, what are your hours of operation going to be? We're going to open at eight and we're going to close at 10. Great. Put that on the special use permit application because a year from now, if they start to operate at 2 a.m., till 2 a.m., you can come back at them and say, we got to come back and look at that because you told us it was going to end at 10. So those are the kinds of things. Just be very cognizant of the process and what the implications of your decisions are.
And the last thing I'll say on, because you got, we got other questions I want to talk about, is the other mistake I see is not reaching out for help. You know, I think there's a lot of good technical people out there. I think most boards reach out to their local engineer to make sure the water's going to drain downhill, and that's fine and that's necessary. But when you're starting to get in the community character or neighborhood character, some of these other issues, reach out to a planner, reach out to a landscape architect. There's other professionals out there besides attorneys and engineers, and they're great. Some of our most trusted colleagues are engineers and attorneys. We love them, we need them. But they're not the only game in town. I think so. There's other professions that are well-suited. Architects, for example, with some of these design things we've talked about today, some of the pictures we had you look at, the pictures you'd liked, most of those had a good architect behind them. You know, so reaching out to an architect to say, you know, can you give us some thoughts on this building? And we actually find that develop, some developers, the good developers appreciate that because one of the things that developers hate, in my experience, is uncertainty. So trying to guess what the planning board wants is costing them time and money. If you have an architect that said, hey, we might have the planning board, the architect kind of knows you, the planner kind of knows you, and can talk shorthand and say, hey, developer, this is going to be your most efficient path for approval. It needs to look like something like this. Most good developers appreciate that and say, great, next board meeting, my drawing's going to look like that. So with that, I'll jump to the next question.
So we have a handful of questions, and I know we're both unwinded. So I just want to put, if you have to or want to jump off in the next couple of minutes, feel free. But if it's okay with you, Sarah, I think we're happy to kind of stay on and address the questions as they're coming in, you know, not going to have a conversation for another hour, but we want to try to do our best to answer your questions. So one of them is, and I referenced this before, we have experience working with combined planning and zoning boards. How do they work out and how much work is it for board members? That's a great question. It becomes more complicated and difficult for the individual members to put on their blinders when it comes to certain review procedures. So again, if it's the zoning board operating in the variance realm, those parameters are very narrow. So, you know, even though on some special use permit or site plan applications, you might start to talk about some other things that are outside of those factors. In variances, it's very clear what you have to, you know, work with. So we come in and we'll help them differentiate between which hat they're wearing, depending on the application. There are benefits to that, obviously, in that you can, you know, have a little more latitude and understanding of how maybe, hey, if you adjust your site plan this way, we don't have to look at a use or an area variance for you. The second, in terms of how much work it is, it depends on the number of applications you see. We have some communities that the number one application they see are variances. It's typically a sign that their code is not doing the right thing. So you might want to evaluate that, if that's something that you're facing. But it depends on how much development interest or application interest you have, you know, and some communities will meet more frequently in that sense. Some will, you know, meet less, depending on that. Another question, how can you work with bordering municipalities, so, you know, next to village, town, to follow your comp plan?
I need more help on that one.
So I think I understand what that, what that means. In one context, I think, you know, maybe the village comp plan, in this case, that was the example, village comp plan at the border says something about a certain type of, you know, character development. Whereas on the town side, that comp plan vision does not align with that. Maybe it's more auto-oriented, it's not as walkable, it's very large, you know, a larger scale development than what the village would necessarily want to see. We are big proponents of joint processes for updating or reviewing or creating comprehensive plans, if you have the ability and the, you know, the desire on both sides to work together. We've done several of those, and it's infinitely a better process to communicate and understand each other on your expectations, but also create a document that is consistent between that, that vision. The second side, from a procedural side, is a lot of these actions, amendments, sometimes site plans, especially use permits, do require you to notice that the clerk of the adjacent community, if the action is within 500 feet of their boundary. So that's something that, you know, you are required, and some communities just do it out of good faith for their applications, let the town or the town vice versa, let's the village know what they're doing, gives them an opportunity to give a little input or say, yeah, we're good with it, or hey, we really wish you would do this. It has no binding in that case, but it's a, you know, good neighborly thing to do.
We've got another question, Molly, that talks about if, I think what's happening in this one particular community, the planning board makes a recommendation on site plan review to the town board. The town board has final decision-making processes, the way I'm reading this comment slash question. In that case, the town board can essentially do what it wants. I mean, the planning board is an advisory opinion, for lack of a better description, and the town board can agree with that advisory opinion or not. That's kind of it in a nutshell. It's not, I'm not trying to be blunt, but that's essentially, there's not much else to add to that. The second part of that question is, if the plan board does not agree with the CEO determination, basically, there's any kind of, I won't say any, but Molly's better to speak to the terminology, but that's what the, essentially, a ZBA can do in some instances, and unfortunately, lawsuits and others. You know, I mean, if there's an grievance between boards, there's a grievance, most of the time you see lawsuits and things like that between applicants and the government. But we have seen it, Pittsburgh, where the government actually sues itself. We're not saying that's good. We're not saying that's desirable. We're not advocating for that, but that's what the recourse is. I mean, in some of these things, if you're, if a board feels like they've been wronged, there are avenues for that. You don't see it, I've seen it once in 25 years where that happened.
Yeah, and I'll add, so administratively, you know, it's helpful for, obviously, the CEO or other staff to point you in the right direction of what's relevant from the code and things like that. But they ultimately actually are bound to, like you said in the beginning, they're bound to the black and white of the code. So if the planning board wants to negotiate and thinks you have latitude to do that outside of, you know, some of what's in the code, the code enforcement officer specifically can't really tell you yes or no. It's kind of, you're, you know, they're bound to the language of the law, literally, in that situation.
And it's, and I'm not saying that a good planning process can cure all ills. I'm not that naive. But it sounds like from some of the points to these, to this question and comments, it sounds like the community may benefit from getting on the same page through some kind of planning process. Maybe that just happened and this is still where the community is. But it sounds like there's a variety of understanding on the town's vision. My guess is there's some, there's not an agreement on the town vision if you're getting the planning board saying A and the town board saying B. And then you've got the code enforcement officer doing other things. So it seems like some, some planning process So it seems like some, some, uh, planning processes and maybe a code revision, a process would help immensely get everyone on the same page.
Now, one thing to be clear is that, that if, if the zoning board gets involved, so the zoning board can make interpretations. So say the planning board or an applicant in this case disagrees with the code enforcement officer's interpretation or the planning board's interpretation, um, or you disagree with the code enforcement officer, you can then request that the zoning board issue a decision on what they, or the zoning board issue a decision on what they think that means. That is the ultimate definitive answer then, at that point of how you move that forward. And I want to clarify, um, though, that the zoning board cannot override any decision made by a review board. Um, they don't get to step in and then say, you know, an applicant can't say, well, I don't like what the planning board said, so zoning board take a look at it. No, that unfortunately rises to an Article 78 process. The zoning board gives appeals to administrative decisions. So mostly just when the code enforcement officer says no. Um, one says, do you have recommendations for templated, uh, checklist that we may use? Um, that's one thing actually that's on our to-do list, is to kind of piece some of that together as good sort of, um, references. Um, but one thing I can say is it's helpful to just kind of search, like John said, you know, Google image search, search some communities. Um, you can kind of see, uh, how they do it, how their applications are put together to, um, you know, we, as part of the application, we think it's really helpful, just copy that list of things you require for that application, put it on the top sheet and put a checkbox next to it. Um, that's a really easy way to make sure you have everything as part of that process. Um, subdivision is a large issue that planning boards might encounter. Is there any New York State subdivision code models that could be referenced and make available to many, many who currently have no or antiquated code? Um, so that's another good question and it's, it's tricky. So you actually have to take a legislative action in your code, um, to invoke, I mean, invoke is probably the wrong word here, but essentially to state. Yeah, to enact, yes, thank you. To, to state that you are going to, um, take on that power of subdivision. So you don't have to, um, but you, if you want to have subdivision review, the simplest thing you can do is just amend your code to say, we're going to have a subdivision review process in accordance with X part of town, village, city law. You don't need to do anything else besides that because there's, there's some direction, um, in New York State law to do that. Um, if you don't have that language, you can't do it because you have no standing to require that review. Um, but if you do have part of that process, again, county referral played, plays into that and you have to, uh, refer and file your decisions with the county afterwards because they maintain essentially the plat, the plat map, um, on that end. Um, so the second part of that is if you want more guidance in terms of your subdivision regulations, uh, outside of, you know, looking at things like clustering, um, you know, to preserve more, um, farmland or open space, whatever, that's another provision, um, that you're going to want to provide for design and construction standards, you're going to want to specifically provide for them. So that's a heavier lift.
And Molly, as far as a checklist, one thing that, um, I just did it, just, I hadn't done it in years. I just typed in site plan review checklist and I got like 20 of them coming up in Google. So there's a, there's a lot of checklist out there, um, for application checklist, review checklist, there are a lot of them out there.
Um, so best, best method, oh, sorry.
Under, um, questions and answer?
Yeah. So we have best method to communicate with the community. I just, sorry, I just, just missed it, John, if you want.
So is that, I wanted to know more, is that in terms of, of pending applications? Is that in terms of how the, um, you know, because we get a lot of, if, if that's one of the topics, if you, hopefully we're, I'm hitting the mark. Um, you know, we talk a lot of communities about notifications and mailings, signage, you know, you, a lot of us have seen those signs in the front yard saying, this property is subject to a variance application, hearing is going to be January 1st at 7 o'clock. Um, you know, so when you, when you talk to communication like that, Molly, what do you think?
Well, I would say it's easier, so if you, we have, there's communities that, um, so you have minimum noticing requirements, right, for, for public hearings? And your code probably also has some direction, um, for whether or not, you know, for some of those other procedures, you do mailing, um, or posted notices. So at a minimum, you should be making sure you're posting that in the newspaper of general circulation, which is what New York State law says, um, and posting it at your town or village hall. Um, the posted notice piece on the actual property, a lot of communities will do just a generic sign like John said, uh, plant, property subject to planning board, uh, meeting, you know, visit website for more information. Um, so that way you don't have to have several signs that update the actual date of the hearing or whatever, things for the meeting, things like that. Um, so it can be pretty standard signs and you can just put that, you know, applicant smits their stuff. You say, here, take this sign, go put it out, bring it back to us when all is said and done. Um, the third piece of that, that I would say is, um, a fourth in this case, there's nothing preventing you from going above and beyond. And I think, um, in, in terms of noticing, and I think residents are a lot more receptive to that. Um, so New York State law has not caught up with where we are in terms of technology. Um, I know some, you know, some communities may be more hamstrung in terms of, uh, skill or understanding of online, um, you know, formats and things, but Zoom and COVID and things like this has really forced a lot of this to be online. And I think, um, you know, we shouldn't take a step back from that. Take advantage of this time to be able to say, all right, we're going to post, you know, our, our agendas, our minutes, maybe the application material itself, um, you know, as it's scanned in or whatever on our website, um, maintain it, maintain it that way so people can reference that stuff. We're going to make, going to utilize, maybe you have a Facebook site for your town or village. We're going to post a notice on, on that end. One thing that gets overlooked is noticing is required to go to property owners, not renters. So, um, sometimes it's helpful, you know, if you can, if you're doing a mailed notice, send that to the occupants of the property as well, um, to give them the opportunity to know that it's, uh, happening. And all of this stuff that I'm mentioning, you can require to be at the expense of the applicant. Um, so for whatever reason, you end up with a very large mailing, um, that, you know, and you can ask the applicant to reimburse you for that as part of that process. It's better if you have that explicitly stated in your code, um, but you can do that as well. Um, the last one I think that we have is should alternate members act as if they are an actual member until voting occurs? And I, I don't know if you want to take that, John, I've got some legal.
No, I would defer to you because I think how I actually experienced in practice was wrong. I was not, I was not, I was not an alternate member, but if, it's like, oh, I know how I got mentored through that process. And I was like, I don't, I'm like, I don't think that's legal. I don't think how we did it was legal.
Yeah, there's a, so there's a lot of communities that, that do this incorrectly. So, um, if for whatever reason, um, you have a member that obviously can't be there, you're asking the alternate member to stand in, in the simple case and it's one meeting, right? Yep, we got the application, we looked at it in one meeting, maybe we held the public hearing that night if it was required. Great, done, issued decision. That's fine. The alternate member has every ability to act in the same way that a, an actual standing member would. The difference is, is maybe it's an application that you've been looking at, you know, you've had two meetings on it already, you previously held your public hearing in one of those meetings, somebody got sick, they can't make the meeting and you want the alternate to stand in. The alternate has to go back and make sure that they review all of the minutes as part of all of that. Or in the case where, when I was on, um, City Planning Commission in, in Rochester, we had recordings, we, we did recordings. So that alternate member would have to listen to the recordings of all of our previous meetings on that application in order to be able to vote. So they can't just arbitrarily come in and then decide, you know, at the last meeting, oh yeah, I'm on board with this. They, they have to be aware of the history and the discussion, but they still, their vote matters just as much as everybody else's. They can ask the same questions, they have the same powers as part of that process.
That is not how we did it.
I, I, I'm telling you, there's a lot of communities that don't do it that way. And I, I should also say, um, you know, this is personally, and this is a lot, I mean, it's a lot of policy and there's a lot of legal implications. And as some of you may know, the, the biggest hiccups that happen don't come from the applications themselves, it's from the procedures and procedurally what happened. Um, that is something that I feel very strongly about, that is probably one, next to community character, making sure your code aligns with that, making sure your procedures are right and aligned with New York State law. There's a lot of things that communities don't understand or, or maybe don't recognize that you have a limit to the number of, of board members. You have, um, you know, you have the ability to set certain parameters on them, um, but you know, there are certain things in terms of how you establish your boards and how you operate that are said to be a certain way. And if you were to ever, for whatever reason, come up against a challenge, your entire process and decision could be invalidated. Um, so that's a, a big one to pay attention to.
I see people are signing off and that's understandable. Um, just to wrap, I want to thank you so much for your time. And Sarah, one thing, I don't know how best to do this, I'm just going to throw it out there. One of the things that I was thinking about for a session like this going forward is, is actually doing, assigning homework in advance and then having the session. Because for site plan, for example, I could see a scenario where Molly and I could actually send out a site plan application, um, in a generic downtown or a generic, we would pick the setting and then community and planning board members or whoever the town board, whoever happens to have that jurisdiction and wants to join us for the conversation could then hop on and we could have a dialogue around this, a little more meaty topic, um, as a follow-up to this. But I would defer to you and, you know, the people who've joined us today. If that's of value, great. If not, we can pick something else at some point in the future if you think it's helpful. But thank you everyone for listening.
Well, thank you very much, John and Molly, for, um, doing the class and I thought it was very good. And I definitely will, um, try to do something in the future if you have a class to follow up on that, on this one. So.
Sounds good.
I'm going to post your, um, PDF on our website so people have the chance. And I will look into Zoom a little bit more. There may be a way where the participants can actually talk, not just, um, be silent. So I'll make sure I look at that before we schedule another one.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Sarah.
Everyone.